Specially the agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, dear God, and indivisible, with whose objective is for all.
All right, thanks for coming. The meeting's now in order. I'll ask for agenda approval. Looking at replacing number seventeen with a non-action discussion item. If you're motioning to approve the agenda, Mr. Peterson, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Discussion.
Just like to add that with the donation, the reason why we're replacing that is because we don't know what that donation is as of right now.
So, what's seventeen is totally gone?
Well, it's being replaced with what's up in the box, but the reason we're replacing it is because we didn't have the actual donation amount until it's been all calculated. So, they automatically said they were paying for that football camp. We just have to give them the amount.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, open forum. Anybody in our audience would like to say something?
Anybody else?
I hope. Did we vote?
I don't know.
Oh, good. Hang on. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll give you some microphone.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, open forum now.
Nathan Canning's parent. Just have a couple of questions. I'm glad that Alicia and, oh, I really don't, but okay, you all in here. But I just have a question about this distance learning, hybrid learning. You know, we started this, we were forced into it last year. It was new for everybody. We all went with it. We did it. There was a lot of hiccups. We're forced, slightly pushed into it. Parents are doing it, some are, some aren't. How, how do you see? How is this going to work out with our kids now that they have potentially lost this learning from last year? From what they were not getting from their teachers and now they're jumping into a new grade? And need to not only backtrack into that, distance learn at the same time? And then also learn new things in this new grade? Is standardized testing thrown to the wayside with this now? Because there was earmarks that had to be met last year and I'm certain that there was some form of test they would have to take before they left school. And now that that's not happening anymore. I was just, where, where do these kids? Where's their levels? Where do we know where they are? How are we getting them back to where they need to be with them not here? What are we going to do? How is this going to work? Yes, I'd love to hear it.
Well, wait a minute, hold on, hold on. Now, this could be a conversation that Alicia could have with you privately.
I could give you some very quick overviews, but fast, but then the details should come, like, could come in a very nice long conversation, right?
Absolutely. That's fine, because others that are watching probably are questioning this.
Do you want us to address it now or in a meeting later?
In, but let's do it in a meeting later.
I would prefer that. That's the way our normal thing's at.
We'll set up a meeting.
Okay, well, I just know that there's others that are watching that may have the same question and they won't get that info if it's just Alicia and I.
All right.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I could just add, there are many parents that are questioning the same question that Nathan has brought up to us tonight. And if it will help our, help our parents know what's actually being expected and how we're looking at, you know, basically assessing students and knowing where they're at, I think if we could take just a couple of minutes, it would really, it would help all of our parents in our, in our school district who are live streaming tonight.
All right.
Sorry.
No, hold on. I want to, I want to defend our board chair here. I don't think he is trying to, trying to do it by any means of keeping information from people, no.
Right.
But, but open forum, we don't have to answer any questions to give us time to, to research some questions. And open forum and, and, you know, if it was set up for us to answer questions, we would never get through open forum in one night, let alone our meeting. And I think that's where our board chair was coming from with that.
Exactly right. That's been our, it's been run, but anybody that's ever got a question, I'm sure, you know, and I know you all want, you've got so many parents out there. How long is this going to take? Alicia.
Um, two minutes.
All right, we'll give you the two minute.
Time me. Okay, here we go. Can I pull my mask down to speak?
Yes, you're presenting.
I feel like I'm. First of all, we're scheduling the assessments to happen right away. So, for like elementary, it's during open house with the parent present and giving some real-time data. We have access plans since last spring. We were doing vertical alignment as to pass on standards from one grade level that were not met. So, that the next year, teacher could already figure out how to meet those standards plus their standards. So, we put that plan in right away. This year's different because we're using Google Classroom as an entire school where the students can live stream and meet with their teachers in real time. Also, your live stream meet can be recorded and played back later. We have created a very extensive health guide for students and for parents and families. And we are, you know, we're really pushing the digital envelope, like, the, the good thing that's coming out of this is students are going to learn how to be digital learners and producers and consumers. And teachers are, you know, being forced to move at a really fast rate, so I appreciate the ones that have come in and helped deal with that. But we have also added online curriculum that's new and really extensive so that there's resources that students can access. We've made sure technology is in place and we've made sure that we've problem solved and troubleshooting what it looks like from a student end, so we don't have the hiccups that we had last year. We already know which families need it and which families need help. And I've pushed my teachers really hard and I think Sue has two to make sure that it is not at all like it was before. But that we are using the tools that are standardized line and the, the learning locators and the individualized assessments. Every kid's going to have to have like a customized plan to catch up across the nation. And this is a problem for all of us, so we're staying on top of it. Yep, and there are standardized tests, of course, are required every year with the MCA's. That was waived because of this having, most school districts didn't do it at all, didn't even start it. And so, it was waived for last year in the elementary, you know, they're doing their test during open house. We're doing ours in the first two weeks of school. And so, we're using the NWEA which correlates with the MCA's and the standards. That creates learning pathways that we're using for reading and math for that. We also are adding on our Apex curriculum or tutorials, so it's a digital curriculum that students can have access to. That also has the learning pathways with learning pathways with whether it's study island or with this Apex tutorials. It tests the students, finds the gaps, and then it fills in the gaps. So, it's every single student does customize. So, everybody here on this board would have a different path of what they're being taught based on what they need. So, we have that that is going on. The other thing is that we are, we are training our teachers, we're training our students to try and access that stuff digitally. So, that everyone is getting exactly what they need. So, yeah, it's a lot of work and we do know that the way it was delivered last spring was a quick band-aid to get through and we had so many unknowns. This year, we have a little bit more, you know, knowledge of what to expect. And, and our expectations for the teachers are much higher and our expectations for the kids are much higher, so we're doing those adjustments.
Working towards personalized and individualized instruction.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other spectators have any questions or anything? All right, hearing none. Thank you. All right, we'll start with the reports. Elementary PK five principal.
Okay, so I sent my report. Basically, it's everything you can imagine to prep for the school year plus more, but we've been doing a lot of trainings and then trying to push my staff really hard without making them feel too much pain. So, I apologize to those of you who are listening, but it's, it's been necessary. So, I'm that voice in the back of their head, like pushing them and plugging and plugging and plugging. They've been awesome joining me in weekly meetings, even off contract. I said it's optional, but they've joined in anyways. We have stayed really on top of things and we've got a good pace going. We're, you know, we're like any school where we feel behind the eight ball, you know, let's plan a whole year and implement it with no time. But I do feel very good about the direction we're going and the positive staff we have. So, we are, everything's coming together. So, we've been doing all those specialized trainings where I work with them and train them and then they're going to train each other. Same with Sue's staff. We've had our special ed trainings and updates. Those have been quite extensive and they have a lot of work ahead of them. We have done our crisis prevention intervention training. We have done all the plans and edits and updates to all of our documents. Some things are still in the works, but almost done. Final ordering, materials, all the new things that you don't think of in a typical school year, but you do this year. So, there's been a lot of extra things to pick up and arrange. I've been really happy to pass on the para duties to a new person and work with that person. I cannot imagine doing that on top of this job right now. So, I'm very happy for her and it's working out well. We have had lots of family Q and A, lots of communication going on constantly, email, phone calls, messages, messages, excuse me. So, we have done our, our technology needs. Thanks to Becky, Jim, those guys have been working non-stop. And the pile is, they won't, they won't climb out of it, but they keep working really hard and helping us. I really appreciate that and maintenance too. I know that it's just people here are working dog tired. They're working hard. I really appreciate everybody. We are doing a brand new flip chart, help chart for families, so like the crisis flip chart we have where you can go tab by tab. So, that families aren't like, well, how do I do Google Classroom? How do I do Class Take? What, how do I do distance learning if I decide suddenly that's what we need to do? So, it's pretty well spelled out. Any changes in transportation, all that, they can just slip right to that tab and get their answers. We did a digital help guide that we found from another district and just tweaked it a little bit. It's really awesome. So, students, kids, families, teachers can all log into their own site to get help. And we have a district communications person now, Karine, and working with us to create our own personalized tutorials and how-tos. Because I think like there's so much written information that families will just, we don't want them to get overwhelmed, so we're working on videos and tutorials. Basically, you know, probably a lot of stuff you don't want to hear or know about because of so much details, but really it is all about staying organized and pacing right now. So, and trying to stay afloat and healthy so that we can keep leaving our schools. That's a big concern right now. I feel like I don't know how much more human in some of our roles can alter it, but we must encourage it.
You got it. There you go. We encourage it. You're doing a good job. I know it's very effective. Anything else, Alicia?
No, if you want to know more, you can always talk to me, call me.
Okay.
The shields came from the students. If you'd like to see those.
Cool.
So, they are here.
All right, thank you. Mr. Davis?
Hi, so in regards to the students, PSEO students, our new county councilor, Ms. Wise, has sent out information to our PSEO to come and meet with them. Most of them came in last week on Wednesday to meet with her, to look over their schedules and some of them have to pick up books because we always pick up the pine textbooks. And so, those students had to come in and get their books. Summer credit recovery is completely done. We have everyone is logged out of there and out of, we had, well, actually, we had nine students who enrolled in the program. We did have fourteen show up and out of that, we had eight students that earned credits and four others are very close. Two of them just have to take the final exam and then they got their credit. And so, we're waiting, as soon as they come back, we'll find a study hall or even after school and have them take that final exam so that they can get the credit. And then two of those, of those four just have like one unit to do and then the final exam. So, honestly, it was a huge success, our credit recovery. So, this was our second summer of doing that and it was phenomenal this year. Our ACT, so last year in the spring, we were supposed to have our ACT test. Of course, we had COVID, so it got rescheduled to later in May. And then, of course, that had to be rescheduled. And so, one other date that they're offering is October sixth. And so, information went out to this year's seniors that if they wanted to take the October sixth, that we're going to try and attempt to do that date. We're hoping that everything is going good and students can come in. But we will do a test here on October sixth and then we'll still offer one in the springtime. Most colleges, however, have already, are giving waivers to where students don't have to have an ACT score in order to enroll. And so, they will look at transcripts and, and other state testing, so MCA's scores, things like that, in order for students to get enrolled. But if they wanted, we're offering the October sixth date as a guideline. Schedules, we're still looking and finalizing all of those, just making sure that they are correct. And so, Ms. Wise has been going through those for staff. We're looking at our math curriculum, so we're still waiting for our upper math to come in. And the nice thing about that is the webinars, we have access to that. So, we don't have the curriculum for it, but Mr. Halverson and Mr. Gann have been going on and doing those webinars for that. So, that they know what's coming. The nice thing about that math curriculum that we have is it does have a huge digital component for it. And so, the teachers can assign things online, the students can do the work online. The curriculum is right there for them and then it also has a lot of tests for them. So, if the teachers want to do inventory tests to see what the kids know, what they don't know, it really helps with the planning of the curriculum and so they can use that. And then there's also enrichment activities that students can do with that digital curriculum. The other thing with staff is that next, this week, we will be doing lots of training on the curriculum. So, I talked about the Apex tutorials. That is something new that our teachers are going to be able to use so they can do just basic requirements for students to go online and learn about certain parts of a unit. They can do a whole unit, so teachers can assign those. They can look and get reports on how the kids are doing. They can use it for grading if they want to, or they can just use it as a requirement or instruction. So, they're going to be learning the Apex stuff. They're getting refresher on the study island and the NWPA. That is going to be working on that with them. So, to make sure that they're using that to its fullest. We also have teachers that are teaching other teachers on Google Classroom and all of the features that are available through Google Classroom. And we also have some teachers and our company are making some videos on the basics on how to use Google Classroom, how to use your Chromebook, you know, troubleshooting, all that kind of stuff. And we'll have those on the website so that students and their parents can look at it if they have any questions when they're at home. So, our staff is really stepping up and helping out quite a bit for them. And then, you know, with meetings and conferences, we've had our crisis prevention that they always have to do every year. And this year, it was done through Google Meet, so it was a little bit different, but it worked out pretty well. We've had a couple of our teachers who work on our PBIS, the Positive Behavioral Interventional and Supports. They attended the last meeting and we had something else at the time, so we couldn't attend, I can't remember what it was.
It was the big group meeting for planning, for our, for our safe, safe school learning plans.
Yes, that's what it was. And so, but I know we had several of our teachers attend that. This next year, we will be starting to have our staff work a little bit more with PBIS. Because our expectation is that at the end of the year, we're going to start rolling it out to the students so that next year, we can fully implement that PBIS. We had our substitute teacher and her professional meeting. And with that, this year, because of the COVID, we asked that any returning substitute actually not come in for the meeting. We only wanted the new teachers or the new subs to come into the meetings and that was just to reduce the number of people in the building. And so, we actually had three new substitutes attend and so that went really well. We had new teacher training today, so four new high school staff attended. And then, of course, we have our back-to-school workshop this week and next week and then our open house. So, we have, teachers are coming in and they're, we're going to be preparing for that open house, that individualized promotion of our school and our plan for the school year.
Thank you, Sue. Obviously, open house is not on August first, it's got to be September.
Oh, September first.
September first and the second.
I didn't mean to get you. All right, any questions for Sue, any comments? Sue, keep up the good work. I know you guys are busy, so we appreciate it and I know we're not in your chair, but thank God. Okay, thank you. Superintendent Belshan?
To follow up on our meeting today, we had our new teachers and their mentors coming into school today and it was pretty much a full day. And we have ten, ten new teachers in our district this year. And it was just, that's, it's one of my favorite days to meet the new staff and to have them right here in the, the boardroom and getting to know each other, you know, for that bonding of being new in the district. And then also mixing that with their mentors coming in and getting some more of that personal touch and different departments meet with them. And then probably one of the, the highlights is being able to go out for lunch. And so, we did go out for lunch today and it was awesome because we were able to practice social distancing on our buses. So, because there were twenty-five people, we could not take one bus, a seventy-seven passenger bus, mind you. So, we took our two buses and we practiced just what our bus drivers will do and what our students will do. First one on the bus had to go to the backside, a backseat on the opposite side of the driver and then it's kitty corner like this all the way up. Then when we got to the restaurant, had to unload by the front coming off first and then the, the bus driver would be social distancing, making sure that the next person can get off, you know, six feet after the, the first. And then the true test was after lunch, if they could remember who got on the bus first, so that they could do that same going back on the bus and coming back. So, it was, it was a good experience for us to be able to practice it. And I, honestly, I wanted our, our teachers, I, I wanted us to, you know, actually experience it like the kids are going to. And, you know, we, it seemed like we were very far apart from each other and our bus seats are super high. Like Mrs. Davis said to me, she looked back at me and she said, there's not going to be any issue with the kids' social distancing because, she said, you're about the same height as the kids and we can't even see, we can't even see the rest of your face. All they could see is you're about up to here. And so, the seating, the seats on our new buses and almost all of our bus fleet have the same height, they are really tall seats. And so, I really felt comfortable with the social distancing that will occur. And speaking of that, Lisa and Terry and Mark worked all morning looking at those transportation numbers. We have more and more of that data coming in. I had shared a message to parents last Friday night. And just cannot thank parents enough for giving us a heads up if they can about what their plans are. And honestly, there are parents out there and they're being very polite and, and, and we, we are very respectful of their, their decisions to wait. They want to wait these last two crucial weeks and see what happens with, with our situation in the, in the county. So, all is good. And while they were actually, they took the maps of the buses and were trying to, you know, pencil in how many kids were going to be and put them in the right seats. And then they were also making simultaneously a list of the parents that we definitely need to call. Because every parent will be asked what their, what their preference is so that we have everybody accounted for. So, that process is in full, in full momentum right now and we hope to have it done very soon. Lot of county meetings, lot of county meetings, whether they're virtual or in-person. And we will be talking about one of those county opportunities down in our non-action item, our non-action, yes, item today. And I have another county meeting coming up this Thursday. Public health meetings are happening at least once a week, if not twice a week. I'm getting emails pretty much on a, you know, almost daily message, a daily basis, anytime that the numbers are, are shifting. And that is another thing that parents are asking. And I believe that I should go out onto our website and set up an actual Kanabik County public health numbers. And then also the Malax numbers and the Isanda County numbers. And the piece that, that parents will want to know, and this was talked about at the last Friday's meeting, is that public health was asking, do you think on our website, their own, should we put the median age, median age of the people that have, are in the case numbers? And so, and I said, absolutely. And so, median in math terms is the middle number. So, of our forty-some cases that we had as of the end of last week, the median age is sixty. So, half of the cases are sixty or higher, half of the cases are less than sixty years of, of age at this time. And then what I would like to put on our website is the extra information that they give us. And this was as of last Friday, zero of the cases in Kanabik County are any of our students testing positive. Zero of any of the cases in Kanabik County are parents of our students. And so, again, then at the end of what they send us, they have their recommendation. So, as of last Friday, must have been Friday, as of last Friday, it is still recommended by Kanabik County Health that it would be in-person learning for both of our school districts. So, do you think that would be helpful for parents if I put that extra information, try to give them the same kind of information that's coming into us out to them? Okay, I will try to get that set up right away tomorrow. And then the last thing that I wanted to share with you is we have our scheduled pickup time for our PPEs, which is our masks and our shields for our, our school. And so, that's going to happen on Thursday and we really have the benefit of being a small district because they're not going to break up cases because that would be very time-consuming. So, we are going to receive one case of youth masks and that's going to be, I think it's, well, that might be around hundred twenty. The cases of the cloth adult masks are five hundred, a case of the disposable masks forty-two hundred, and the cases of facials is a hundred. So, we will be getting, picking up those cases this Thursday. We have a scheduled time of two o'clock to go get all of that and bring it back into the district. So, we'll have it at open house time. And I think Alicia had already shown you.
It's a little different size-wise and it's just a black band.
So, we have all of that coming into the district. The dispensers, hand sanitizer dispensers are being mounted. Basically, as I speak, on each of these days in every single classroom, they're going to be by all of the doorways to any common areas. And our staff is just working really hard to do that. And those will be refillable, so, and there's a plan of how they're going to be refilled and our custodians are, are just, they're going to help make sure that that happens. And the scheduling for sanitizing and disinfecting and, you know, what we're going to ask students and parent, our students and teachers to do. And what we're going to rely on our custodial staff to do. So, all of those, those plans are in place. And what our goal is, is we have teachers coming in, those front-loaded staffed out of days for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And by Thursday night, we will put out all of the finalized plans on our, on our website. It will be all done and ready to go then. So, any questions for me?
Okay, keep up the good work, Kathy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, anybody? Your chairman. I just want to let everybody know the board's been working really hard in the last month as well, a lot of meetings, a lot of decisions. Working well together and I appreciate that. And I won't go into all the meetings, but we have a tenant, we've adjusted our schedule as well. Any other board member? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to student school board member.
So, all of the PSEO classes started today, so it's a lot of work they're doing with all that stuff. And then I think all the students are excited to get back to school to see their friends and social lives again. I think they're excited to, that we're experiencing the distance learning or the hybrid, so.
Good to hear.
So, yeah, I think that's about it until school starts.
Thanks, Hazel. Okay, any other district employees? I will move on to the consent agenda. Seeing the consent agenda, I will ask for a motion to approve this consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. motion by Mr. Hickerson, second. Second by Mr. Peterson. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed. Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank, welcome all the new personnel we got. All right, action items, approval on this claim. That would be you, Casey?
Uh, yep, and I don't have anything, so, um, two-hundred-seventy-five thousand eight-thirty-eight twenty-seven. Motion to approve.
Motion by Casey. Motion by Casey. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Reno Gunderson, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Health, healthy and safety projects.
Sorry, sorry.
Did I get you? Okay, Kathy?
Well, we, that's, we've already had our work-study session, and, and you've, as a board, as you shared, Jerry, working extensively with looking at, at these different projects and the different bond amounts that, that the district could, could entertain. I don't know if you have any other questions that you want to bring up during, during this meeting, or if you wanted to involve either Injensa or Eller's representatives in your discussion right now.
But, okay, that's fine. Anybody have any questions? Ellers are, I think we got most answering. You people do a great job answering our questions. We appreciate it. Okay, so I will entertain the motion for the health and safety projects on limit. Out. Is that the number I give it now? Kathy?
Um.
No.
Yes, but you might, um, I had best give this information out to you though.
Okay.
I just take that and pass them, and take those and pass them on. Take this and pass it on, so that you can copy that. I think we better do the bond, the, the actual decision first, because that's the order, is deciding on the actual proposal, and then, and then we'll go to the resolution. And so that will be great. You will definitely need your, your help with that.
Hold it. One for you. Who reads this, Kathy?
So this is actually the next item on the agenda. That's, this is the, kind of like the final product of the first decision. So making sure that you, that you talk about the health and safety project that you are wanting to embark on. And then the second, the number eleven would be the actual resolution that you see. So somebody will need to share the resolution, and then you see that, the actual intent that needs to go in the newspaper.
Okay, so.
So we're basically working with both eleven and, or ten and eleven at this time.
Okay, so you want me to ask for a motion to, or just a discussion?
You need to have a motion for this plan.
Yeah.
With, with the dollar amount.
Right. All right, I'm in, I'm looking for a motion to approve this 2020 tax levy planning option uh, for five million, is that the right, right? Five million, six-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-seven dollars, the projects that we've discussed. So motion by Mr. Hickerson. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Casey Heine, discussion. Roll call? Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Resolution, resolution of intent to issue bond. Will you guys read that? Peterson? Good.
Notice is hereby given that Independent School District Number Three-Three-Three, Oldbury, Minnesota, intends to issue its general obligation facilities, maintenance, and refunding bonds, Series Twenty-Twenty-B, in November twenty-twenty, in approximate principal amount of seven million, four-hundred-and-ten-thousand, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section One Twenty-three, eighty-five, nine-five, subdivision five, and chapter four-seventy-five. A portion of the proceeds of the bonds to be issued in an aggregate amount not to exceed six million, four-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand will be used to finance indoor air quality projects as described in the district's ten-year facility plan. A copy of the facility plan will be on file with the district and available for public inspection at the district offices during regular business hours. Total amount of outstanding indebtedness of the district as of August first, twenty-twenty, is two million, forty-nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars. Any interested person may submit written comments relating to the bonds or the projects to the district.
Thank you.
And that will be the actual notice that is going to be made public by being published in our Kanabik County Public Times.
So you want us to vote on that?
Do you need them to go to the actual resolution? Okay, so that's the, the note to, the, the intent, and then you need to go to this sheet, the resolution relating to.
Okay, and that would be, you wanted the whole thing read?
Um, I would say that you need to.
By the undersigned?
Um, Greg, they don't have to read the whole thing, do they?
I used to say that if you read the whole thing, you need to do it in a foreign accent and dramatic voice.
Okay.
He's in, yeah, but if you just read it with all of the capitalized, I, that's typically what, what we're just gonna, uh, in little reading.
Okay.
Okay, so the capitalized sections, basically.
Thanks, Casey. Go ahead.
Oh, gee. Uh, resolution relating to seven million, four-hundred-and-ten-thousand general obligation facility maintenance and refunding bond, Series Twenty-Twenty-B, stating official intent to proceed with and authorizing the issuance and sale thereof and providing for credit enhancement with respect to their. Do I read each one of these headings then, or just?
Yes, go ahead. Just, just the headings, the underlying part would be good.
Okay. Resolution relating to seven million, four-hundred-and-ten-thousand general obligation facilities maintenance and refunding bonds, Series Twenty-Twenty-B, stating official intent to proceed with and authorizing the issuance and sale thereof and providing their credit enhancement with respect to authorization and district indebtedness. Approval by Commissioner of Education of the State of Minnesota. Notice publication, sale, official statement, proposal, state credit enhancement program.
That's all.
And that's all.
Okay, thanks, Casey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith.
I think you can.
Is there a second?
I asked you the question.
Yep.
Okay. Did Tim just read that, just read that, or, I mean, I mean, I, I thought that was a motion that never got stucked in and then.
This, this is the actual, that was the intent. That gets published in the newspaper, so it's really good that it was read, because it, but it was not actually the resolution.
I just didn't know what is really going on.
But I would like, I would like to ask a question, though, on behalf of the board, if I may.
Sure.
Okay, and so Greg from Eller's, if you could help explain this, you'll notice that the amounts that are on this resolution are different than the amount that was already a motion, had a motion and a roll call vote. And so my question of Eller's is, will this be changed, then, to reflect that actual amount of Project B of the five million dollar, six, six-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-seven dollars?
Right, so since we came in, the three options, it was drafted at the highest amount, and if you look in paragraph, uh, section one, it says, uh, in aggregate, aggregate amount not to exceed six million, four-sixty-five for indoor air quality projects. So basically, it can be up to, but not above, and our goal would be to sell the amount of bonds that fits option B. We, if you adopt it like this, it works just fine. We're not gonna, you're not gonna authorize the sale of more bonds than you need. Uh, if you want it amended, uh, we could do a little working on the fly, but I, I worry that we might get a wrong number in there, just by doing it on the fly, and, and would get the board as comfortable doing it at that not to exceed, knowing that we are financing option B, and that's the only projects that we've authorized. That's what we'll bring back to the board.
So that's how we did.
Right, and that's, but I wanted it to be, you know, on record, that those amounts did not match up perfectly with what the decision was, so that the board would be held to the discussion that was taking place and the motions that you had.
Very well.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
Where were we on that? Resolution, we've done that?
That was the discussion.
Okay, all those in favor? No, roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Number twelve, Twenty-Twenty, Twenty-Twenty-One fee prices. Recommendation was to stay the same other than the electoral judges. Is that correct, Kathy?
Um, yes, would you send that down to, you know, ask for a sign that way for me, please? The only, the only new fee adjustment that's been requested from our discussion at, at the July board meeting was that we did need to consider right raising the election judges' amount to dollars. So it would go from twelve dollars to thirteen dollars, if you, as a board, will approve that. And then just to remind you, the places and musicals were increased, ten and seven. The milk price for a carton of milk was raised to thirty cents. And then we opted, you opted to not have the recording secretary compensation, and then using that with the officers' statements.
I'll entertain that motion to do those things. I thought we already agreed on.
We did, but remember, we had to table in case because of COVID and our activities, Minnesota State High School League. All of that was in question, and at this point, across the region, everybody's keeping all of their prices exactly the same, with not knowing for sure what's going to happen as far as spectators being allowed and, and everything. So, but we needed to have that information from Minnesota State High School League first.
All right.
So hope that helps a bit.
Does everybody understand that? I'll entertain that motion for the Twenty-Twenty-One fee prices. So, is that you, Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Casey Heines, discussion. All in favor, say aye, or do we need a roll call on the fee prices as well? It's money. We'll do it anyway. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Policy Five-Twenty-Two, Title Nine, Sixth, Non-Discrimination Policy, Preference, Procedure, and Process. That's a new policy coming down from?
It's not a new policy, but no.
But no, it's revised.
Revised. And I'm going to defer to, to Mrs. Davis, if you'd like to have more explanation on that, because she's the one that implements.
Okay, go ahead, Sue.
So basically, there's just a lot of changes into, into the reporting for sexual harassment and as to when we have to investigate. And so some of those change, or of course, all of those changes are reflected in here, but a lot of it is they just really defined it a lot better than what it was in, you know, in the past. So one of the main things is that also the, the whole investigation process, you know, before, when someone would make a complaint, we would start the investigation, and, and sometimes even the allegations that were brought forward to us, you know, we would start the investigation right away. Now, we first have to inform everyone as to that there's an allegation. So if Tim brings an allegation against you, I have to inform you of the allegation. I have to give you all the information that he's given to me, and then I have to allow you to respond.
Before, you didn't have to.
No, no, I would just, you know, question you and find out kind of what's going on, go through the process. So it really, it's spelling out everything that has to be done in there, and when you actually do have to do an investigation. So they kind of make it, um, before you, if there was an allegation, you just automatically had to start an investigation. Now you don't have to. Now you have to only if it's severe. And so it's, it's really kind of a, it's a clearly defined when you have to investigate, when you don't. They really define how the investigation process happens, and they also give both sides more time to respond before you can actually say this is the conclusion, and here's consequences if there are consequences. One other thing that it does have in there is that if, if an allegation is being brought to you and it's found out that it was a false allegation, that there can be consequences for the false allegation too. So before that was, you know, you couldn't do that at all, so. So that's the gist of it, and then there's also a lot of requirements on, you know, that I have to attend all these webinars and stuff for it.
You gotta be trained?
Yeah, a lot of training, so some, I think there's been four webinars that I've had on this, and I think there's three more that have to be done, so.
But we do have to adopt this policy, so entertain the motion to adopt that policy, Five-Twenty-Two.
So.
Casey, you do that, Casey Heine, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hickerson, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Board member employment, that's me. Policy Two-Ten has to be approved by the board. This is what I do. I go to lunch here, and I'm also asked to help in the kitchen this coming school year, which I agreed to, but I need your permission as a board. So I'll need a, a motion, if so desired. Motion by Reno Gunderson, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by, what's that, Mr. Smith? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
I mean, I abstain, I'm sorry. Motion carries unanimously. I'm all for it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Revised preschool calendar for twenty, twenty, twenty-twenty-one. Do we have that here?
Yep, looks like this when it's in color.
Yep.
And this was sent to you, and because you had already approved the changes in our regular calendar with bringing the three staff development days up front, these are some changes that needed to be made in the preschool calendar as well. So you can see everything that's like in pink and blue at the beginning of the school year has been kind of moved up. And, and I, oh, I should share, preschool screening happened here last week, also two days, and, um, it, by appointment, and it was awesome. And so it was just really wonderful to see our, our little ones coming in and with their parents, and they went through the screening. So very successful. Tricia was very pleased with it. And our new health nurse came in also to help with that. So that's preschool screening and preschool calendar.
Good. So we'll entertain a motion to accept a revised preschool calendar for twenty-twenty-twenty-one.
So.
Motion by Reno Gunderson. Second.
Second.
Second by Casey Heine, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Handbooks for the school year activities, coaches advise as elementary students, case six, twelve students, admitted to preschool. We got them, and we're looking to approve those tonight without second and third readings, not required.
Correct.
So I'll entertain that motion as well. Motion by, is that you, Reno?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion by Reno Gunderson, do you have a second?
Second.
Casey Heine, second, discussion.
There will be an addendum. I believe that Sue and Alicia and I just talked about this today, and we will put in like a COVID addendum to it, because that's one of the reasons why the, the handbooks have not gone through our practice of reading them over a couple of months' time. It's because of that, and so some school districts have put in some, the COVID language, talking about the attendance, talking about, um, the, the student dress, you know, with masks and/or shields, shields, and just will put in as much as we think needs to be there to help with being able to actually facilitate this year following our handbook guidelines for parents.
Any other discussion on that?
And you did receive the preschool, the preschool addendum, so this was already, because you had already approved their whole handbook, and so this is the extra that's been added to it. Thank you.
Yes. I went to that advisor meeting, too, I forgot to mention with the ECFB people, very nice people, doing a good job, just like always, very exciting, so it's good for the little kid. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Number seventeen, non-action discussion, Knavet County Cares Act for all public schools. Kathy?
And that, Jerry, you asked me to put on, because Linda, Linda and I have gone to a couple of meetings now, and.
Just regarding food service, right?
This is food service.
Or meals for.
So there are different components of this, but for this discussion, the county reached out to us to see if we could help provide food, food for families, and food not just for our families, but for all vulnerable adults. And so reaching out basically to our seniors, to our families or individuals that can't get to the grocery store, and here in Olgavee, because we don't have an actual formal grocery store, it makes it even more difficult. So they reached out to both school districts and asked if we would put together a proposal for part of the county's funding that they were receiving, and I believe it's right about three million dollars that has been received. So Olgavee schools did do an actual proposal, the Moore School District, they couldn't do that part of it. They had started the process, but it was, they just didn't feel that they were ready or were able to, to actually have the transportation or the, or the actual food service people in order to prepare and deliver food out to the individuals. So we had a follow-up meeting, by the way, Moore Schools, though, they are also doing outreach in the Knavet County, and they're doing it through their backpack program. So they're expanding their backpack program and bringing that out to the vulnerable residents of our county. So we had another meeting because then the county, Chuck Hurd, he is the director of Family Social Services, asked if we would be able to be more widespread, rather than we, we went with our Olgavee community and working with our churches, with our Olgavee food shelf, all of those organizations within, within our town, our city. They asked if we could be more widespread through the county, and asked if we would put into our plan, they would really like to use timber trails, because that is a county transit, transportation program. So in order to reach people that are further out from just in our city limits area, they would actually have timber trails come here and, and pick up the food that's going to be going to the other far reaches of the county. We would be using our own transportation people for in-town. So we were looking at three apartment buildings in-town that we would, that we'd actually be making deliveries to, basically every day if we're in-person learning, because we felt it was really important to bring a hot meal. So whatever's being, whatever food is being prepared for that day for the kids is what would go out to the residents, and they would have a hot meal then, and then they would also have a supper meal, which would be like a baked supper, being provided to them. And that would be brought, that would be brought out by our, by our van drivers, bus drivers during, during the course of the day. And again, it's only three stops, and we would also then open up where people could do curbside, where they could come to the school and pick up food if they would like to, too. But it has to be in a vulnerable person, it has to be where, where they have either lost their job because of COVID and need some additional help for other family members, because, you know, right now, we've been doing it for the kids.
But is that going to be the county's responsibility to get that to us? I mean, we're not going to go out and say, are you, did they do the screening for those?
We would be using our local agencies to help us with determining who could use some help, and we would actually be asking our staff. So at our all-school staff meeting, we are on August thirty-first, we'd be asking, hey, do you know anybody that really could use some help? And they would have to sign a form then, saying, you know, giving us their, their name and that they lost their job or that they're an at-risk person, they're over sixty years old. So anybody over sixty years of age would also be eligible because they're considered in the at-risk age range. And again, because we don't have a grocery store, there are a lot of people that are, they're staying home, and they're, they could really use some help. So all of this description is really letting you know that all of our costs would be paid for through the county cares act money, and so we need to do our second proposal, and we would not be receiving, reaping any revenue from this except to actually pay for expenses. So that means we would need to have additional food service help, and we'd have to have additional transportation, very limited with that, and we would, of course, need the food costs. And so we're looking at continuing with that proposal, we need to have it to Mr. Hurd by tomorrow afternoon. And so the things that I just shared with you are what we would be proposing, and this is just information pieces to you, because there might be people that we asked to come in and help with this, and they aren't going to be actual district employees. What I mean by that, they, their payment is not going to be tied to the district, it's going to be reimbursed by the county.
But if they're in a school building, we're doing something, don't they have to have a background check also?
They're not made. Employees, but for this, for this grant, they would not be paid with district money. They would be paid through the county, and therefore it would be county, it's like, it's like counties paying for the, for the expenses rather than it being us, but it might very well be our own hires, might be our own people, and it might even include Jerry. And so if he's included in that, it would be outside that limit that board members can make, because it would be paid for by the county, not paid for by the district.
I want to ask, when you make that proposal?
Yes.
What about the unknowns that pop up when they make, I mean, how do you factor that in? Let's say something that nobody's thought of, and all of a sudden it's costing us ten thousand dollars, and they're not going to reimburse it. Is there any language in that contract, and it be subject to new discovery, or do we know everything already?
No, absolutely. We would be able to ask them for, they do not want this to be an extra cost to us at all, they think it is wonderful, they, they basically said this is a humanitarian effort on our part, and that they really appreciate the community service that Olgavee provides for their community.
I thought, the container, you say bring a hot meal, that blows me away, because you're going to have to have the right container to deliver a hot meal.
It's just uptown, so it's, it's just taking it in a styrofoam container, and it's going, it's delivered out to three sites, the food is brought to them, it's, it's not going to get cold in that short amount of time.
You know, I do get that it's a great service, but I, I do worry about the extra work involved for some people who, most of our staff is already overworked.
Right.
And, and you know, the work part of it, some of the stuff you explained don't seem like would be getting reimbursed for, and, you know, but.
Yes, we would be, Brian.
But with some of that intricate work, and, you know, what you said, you know, think, you know, talk to this people, have, you know, do this, do that, do this, I mean, that's our employees taking, that's more extra steps and really not getting paid for it. But I get that it's a great sir, I'm not, I'm not arguing about the service, I'm just saying, we have to understand that we're going to be putting some more work on these people.
And if we're taxing them people more, they should get paid for it.
And, well, it would be new hires, because we can't do it with our existing staff. We cannot do this with our existing staff. So it'd have to be new hires that are being brought in, and the, the food service director would be taking on more, but that, that extra time would be reimbursed by the county. And what they've asked us to do is do a costing of up to in this grant, so that there is that, that leverage, that wiggle room for, for expenses that come along the way. But so up to, they, we set three hundred meals, so up to three hundred meals would be being prepared if it's possible. And here's the thing, if we can't find the hires to do this, then, then we can't do it.
In those three hundred meals, are those separate from those that are on our online students?
With, that online students is a completely separate discussion, and that has nothing to do with this grant.
Are we going to be putting like a ad out paper, looking for new hires for those?
I believe that we already have ads, but yes, but again, it has to be approved by the county board, too. And so we're still in the stages of putting this together, so the start date wouldn't be before September fifteenth.
When is the county board meeting, do you know?
I'm not sure, we asked if we should go to a county board meeting, and we were told probably not at this time, because again, they're hearing from all different, different sectors on how, how they should be using the dollars that they have. But they will reach out to us, they know that Linda and I are both willing to go to the meetings if they'd like us to be there.
And the county is going to pay for the food?
Yes.
And we're going to prepare it, and then we're going to deliver it?
Yep, county pays for the food, for the new hires of the employees to prepare the food, for any kind of transportation of the food out to the, the community.
And the way.
And yes, all of it.
Okay, how about you? You personally, do you or any of our staff, office staff have to, have to?
Administer.
Administer, conduct anything that goes along with this?
If we do, and we probably would, and I have.
I imagine you would.
It would be our district communications, new hire, and we would be able to build wages in for her, for her time to be spent on this as well. And once it's set up, then it's, then it's a, it'll, it'll run. So do you want us to proceed? Or are you thinking that we should just say we can't take this on at this time?
Well, you and Linda looked at it, and, you know, and I hope you covered all the, all the bases, because this is quite an undertaking.
What is Linda's perspective on it?
Oh, she is.
Yeah, she's all for it.
Is she?
I mean, this was a very collective effort, so we had, when we did the first proposal, it involved our business manager, our technology coordinator, our food director, me, and I know I'm missing somebody, but we had, I believe, five people that were involved in the actual initial proposal that went out.
Well, I don't have a problem with you pursuing, it doesn't mean the decision is made today, but yeah, you want to look into it, why not? Just considering all the factors, mostly it's all money, and I don't want to spend any school district money on a program that's mostly funded by the county, because we're Mr. Nice Guy, I like being Mr. Nice Guy, don't get me wrong, but make sure you include the compensation for every employee involved, no matter what the path.
I, I worry about, yeah, I say pursuing, but I worry about the time and effort, some of our, you know, I, I don't want some of our employees to get sidetracked by this when, when they're already being overwhelmed by work as it is.
Very good point.
That's my word.
Very good point.
Yeah, and that includes you.
Thank you.
I'm not, you know, very much includes you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Exactly who the person I have in mind, if you want me to be honest, so.
So this is all getting paid for from that Cares Act?
Yes.
What happens with the money in itself?
That's why it's only, it's only for a period of time from like September fifteenth would be the earliest start date, and we're supposed to plan through the end of November, because the money will most likely end up running out in December, and so it's a fixed.
But it just worries me, so now we have hired how many employees? And are they going to go into unemployment?
They would be, they would be, no, they would be hired for just this grant purpose, and so that language would be in the master agreement, yes.
All those things you don't know about.
Again, they're not being paid for with district funds, they're being paid by the county, and when the county's job is done, there, that's, it would run out, it would terminate.
So this is like a seasonal position, that's just a one season, one time, that's it.
That's all.
So why don't we just make it a volunteer position instead of a paid position from the county?
Because I think, I think it'd be really hard to find volunteers, and then with background checks and all of that, and.
I have something about you to say.
Right, right, if we're going, if we're going to be managing it, we want to make sure that we're managing with the, with right people and that we're following all of our protocols that we have in our district.
Okay, but is what coming before the board for final decision?
Oh, absolutely. And of course, it's got to go through the county first, this is just a proposal.
And then like, note that they're coming back to school, I think we'd like to see the plan.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? I think it's a great idea, too, Kathy, to help these people out in this tough time. All right, item last.
Making motion adjourned at seven oh five.
Motion by Mr. Hickerson.
Section B F.
Second by Reno Gunderson. All those in favor, or any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, thank you people for coming, I appreciate it, really. Nice to see you again, Nathan. Nice to see you.
Do they ask the churches to help out them?
We, we're.